Please understand that we are still doing this via video chat and whatever you call this stuff, that we are here and there's no disrespect when I'm gonna read, I'm gonna do off the flag salute myself and the standing and everything, there's no disrespect in it, especially after this weekend, so. Everybody know, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're gonna move on to roll call. So Kathy, can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blakely.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Church will not be with us this evening. Commissioner Hallie.
Here.
Commissioner McLendon. Chairman Mobley.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
And Commissioner Roger, or Vice Chair Rogers, sorry.
Here.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so at this point, we're gonna move on to approval of the minutes from April 14th. Can I get a approval on those?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
There you go.
And roll call vote again.
Please.
Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
Alright. Okay, opening to public comment. So right now, anybody at home that would like to talk about anything that's not on the agenda tonight, we strongly ask you to call in or to email Kathy and let us know what's going on on your mind. Understand, we got about three minutes per caller or through email, we'll talk about it. We can't make any decisions during this time, but we can definitely listen to you. So if you're at home, you're listening to this, you're seeing this, please. And at this moment, we're gonna open it up. We'll give you a few minutes to call in or email. As we're all sitting around waiting for that to happen, I'm gonna hope everybody had a great weekend, three year weekend. Hope everybody got to go out and see the sights and get out a little bit from being locked down as we've been.
I hiked Fern Canyon, five miles in, five miles out.
That's funny, we started to go there and ended up at Patrick's Point instead. And I'm ashamed to say that's the first time I've been was this weekend.
I'm ready to go do it again. It was so fun and so nice.
Did you take pictures Stephanie?
I did, we did. Kurt and I took a lot of pictures and it was awesome. I wanna go again.
I haven't been there in years.
That was like a good weekend trip for me.
We got out to Patrick's Point with the grandkids that came up and got up there on Wedding Rock and looked out and first thing my granddaughter who's fourth looks down, she goes, Grandpa, there's a sea line. So we looked straight down and it was really blue water. We see the sea line and I said, well, look right out there, there's a whale. And sure enough, right there, it's coming up and down, it was just out just a little bit, there was a whale out. So it was beautiful out there this weekend.
Lucky we get to live in this beautiful place.
Hey, you're there. Okay, well, here none, seeing none, looking to close.
I'll make a motion that we close the public opportunity to participate.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll do a roll call vote for that as well.
Yeah, do a roll call, but okay.
Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
Alright. Okay, moving on, let's get to the real business at hand. The public hearing to consider approval for subdivision application that processes subdivision of 1.16 acre parcel into two parcels consisting of 1.65 acres and 1.15 acre, or 5, excuse me, 5.1 acres each. The property is at 3707 First Street. So staff, can you give us a rundown on this, please?
Yes, thank you Chairman Mobley. And yeah, this is the first of our four agenda items tonight, and it is a minor subdivision of a 1.16 acre parcel into two parcels, 0.65 acre and 0.5 acre. And the both parcels, or there are two single family residences located on the site, so each of the new parcels would have one of the houses located on them, and that is the main purpose of the subdivision is to place each on a separate lot, and there is no new construction proposed. You can see on the screen, the project location, it's in the southeast sort of quadrant of the city in the Roneville neighborhood, and it's located northeast of Roneville Road and Mill Street. It's actually located on just a small street called First, First Street there. Basically, I think it's across from Jordan, between Jordan Street and School Street. So move on to the next slide. Here's an aerial view showing what I just described. Roneville Road is located on the left side of the screen and then First Street. And then you can see the private road that extends off of First Street. And the blue lines, the blue lines are actually not the proposed subdivision line, but that's the assessor parcel, those are the assessor parcels. It just has, it's got two assessor parcel numbers, but it's really one legal parcel. So the tax assessor has two different taxing taxing numbers for their taxing purposes. That's really how the assessor parcel numbers get assigned, but so you can see, it's really one parcel with the two houses, the lower one down here with also detached building on it, and then the upper house. And the, you can, you'll see on the tentative map that the area is pretty steep hillside, but the residences are located on fairly level you know paths. So let's see what else is here. I'll move on to the next slide, just quickly go over the background. The zoning is R110. And you can see it's kind of in an area with a lot going on. There's R16 down below. Oh, my battery's low. I must not be plugged in. Let me, I'm gonna make sure I'm plugged in, just give me one second.
I drove out and took a look at this today, and it seems like pretty straightforward to me.
Actually live in this neighborhood and I agree Sandy, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, I'm glad it gave me that warning.
Sound like you were at the casino and you just won.
Um. There we go. So here's the subdivision app. It is really straightforward. In fact, there aren't any public improvements. I think that's my computer. Warning me that the battery's low, it should be charging now. I got plugged in. So there are no public improvements required for the subdivision. It's got existing utilities, including sewer and water mains located in First Street. And you can see that utilities come off of First Street in this area, both water and sewer, and then the overhead power. The only thing that it requires is for the water and sewer to be separated. Right now they share. So they'll each need their own laterals connecting, and so they will need to install a water meter and a sewer cleanout. And then the other improvement is the fire department did request a fire truck turnaround because of the narrow, steep nature of the lot. They don't wanna get stuck up here without any ability to turn around. So the proposal is, the applicant worked with the neighbor to the north and they would they did supply a letter of agreement that they would be willing to dedicate an easement for the fire truck turnaround here. And there's also a condition that if they are not able to perfect
Liz, you're breaking up. Liz?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes, can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, she broke up a little bit there.
Okay, I'm sure.
Kathy, are you able to continue? Hi. So Liz broken up. So are you able to continue? She's trying, I can hear. Alright. Hey Sandy, how you doing?
Good, you know, I heard the casinos are open for curb side service now.
He could go out there and gamble real quick and run away.
Are they gonna wheel out a slot machine?
No, they just got a bucket on the curb. You just drop by, drive up and drop your money in the curb, in the bucket.
Actually, I have a customer who's a casino dealer and he says they're open. They're getting paid a higher hourly rate, but they can't take tips yet.
Good. Hey, so on this project before, while we're the only question I had was, is there a easement that, when I'm looking at this and on this map right now, is there easement? Because the driveway connecting to the top parcel and the bottom parcel.
It's very steep.
Yes, it is. I remember we had garbage bins up there a long time ago on that, and we had to do a whole lot of finagling with this place. But that driveway on the bottom, you see where it connects, so it is on the bottom parcels. Starts off on there, so is there easement is, was my only concern.
Well, I see here that they have a proposed easement for parcel two.
Yeah, I see that.
It must be taking it under consideration.
Hopefully. Hate to not be able to get to your house.
It's maintaining the same ownership.
Right, at this moment.
Right.
You bend that, you bend your neighbor out of shape at the bottom and you know. Now things rolled downhill and that's on a steep hill.
So Liz is having some technical difficulties. But there's been enough of the staff report presented. If you guys wanted to do your vote, we can vote now and then we're gonna take a little pause before the next project.
First, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, to go through the whole process.
Very motion.
So I understand our applicant Keith is there. Maybe we can ask him a couple questions real quick?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi Keith, hey, I don't know if you heard everything that we were just asking about the lower and the upper parcel. I I saw there was a proposed easement. Is that all in effect?
So the easement that's being proposed is for the utility to benefit the lower parcel and the upper. There was no new easement being proposed for the driveway that was just discussed or entered in just a few minutes ago. And then, of course, there is an easement where the meets and bounds are gonna be added and recorded for the fire truck. So the actual depiction on the map isn't completely accurate in terms of what's gonna be surveyed shortly, you know, pending approval. But we could address that, you know, with no trouble at all if there's a question as with regards to that that driveway being in conflict with the parcel one and two.
So easement of access, I'm guessing would be a big deal. Something we should probably look at. Make sure that you're able to separate those two. So somebody can actually access it without being upsetting the next, the owner. Especially if it gets split in the future. Something we should probably look at. Does anybody else have any other questions for Keith right at this moment?
Yeah, so I would comment, the parcel on top is worth a whole lot more if there's an easement on the driveway for it. If you buy that with no easement, you're potentially at risk.
Absolutely.
Good to know, thank you.
Anyone else out there want to ask any questions about this to the applicant?
Do we wanna open it up for a public comment before you guys?
Sure, let's do that while we're waiting. Can, so at this point, anybody out there wanna open this up to public comment, please?
We open it up to public comment at this time.
Let's do that. Kathy, last time we had a number to call 725-1484. So anybody out there that's watching at home, please do that. If you have any comments on this, wanna talk about it. We would love to hear from you. Kathy, is there an email address?
That would be k Schmidt at C I dot Fortuna dot C A dot U S.
I just saw that, sorry. Thank you. So while we're waiting. Anybody else do anything fun this weekend?
I worked in my garden, got all my starts planted out.
Good job.
Drove to Seattle to see my son for his 23rd birthday.
Oh, fun.
You drove?
Yeah, it's about a nine and a half hour drive.
I was gonna say 14. I guess it depends Seattle, not, I used to live up in Bellingham, so.
Yeah, I don't, I'm right there by Tacoma. I don't take too many bathrooms.
Tacoma, that's out there. No thanks, nine and a half hours in a car, but you know.
And it was perfect opportunities, the same day of his birthday, my daughter had her wisdom teeth all pulled.
Oh. There's no fun.
No.
I guess there's no videotape unless you're recording it, so sorry. I sounded old right there. Liz, looks like she's trying to get back on.
Can I tell something to Rachel?
Yeah.
Rachel, I finished my semester with a 4.0.
I am so proud of you.
I was so happy. I know, thank you so much. I'm so happy.
That's amazing, especially considering what we've all been dealing with. Congratulations Stephanie.
Cars open, we can all help you with a drink.
Right?
Water.
Water.
You gonna drive around graduate with everybody else?
I got more to go. I'm not graduating yet.
You and me both, sister.
Okay, Kathy, are we getting anybody coming in, calling in, asking questions right now?
No calls.
Okay.
The motion that we close public participation.
I'll second that motion if it needs a seconding.
Yep. Kathy, you wanna do a roll call?
Vote. Commissioner Blakely. Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
Okay, so that looks like that was ready to rock and roll. So we're going back to the commission. Anybody have anything they wanna comment on, on this project? Add to.
I think it's pretty open and shut.
Okay, seeing nothing. Should we ask or consider anything or put into the comment section of this about the access to the above property, the adjacent property?
It's kind of their business whether they give that or not. I would say it's our place to tell them to do that.
Says it's there on this map, doesn't it? Existing 50 foot wide easement and access for parcel two is clearly labeled on our map.
Fair enough.
I think this gentleman's done his due diligence. I believe there's no change in ownership. I don't, I don't think this is an issue that we need to really debate, honestly.
Understand, so what our applicant stated was it was not about access, it was all about the rest of it and everything else. So, okay, so looking for a motion, I guess.
Motion to adopt resolution number P 20203036. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving a tentative map of a 5.99 acre parcel into two parcels, 0.65 acre and 0.51 acre in size. Roll call vote.
Before, before you say that, is that 5.99 a typo? The two parcels, it says you're gonna break it in two.
5.1 Larry. 0.65 acre and 0.51 acre?
Right.
His question is saying that it doesn't equal to 5.99 with those two parcels.
5.16. Oh, 1.16, sorry.
So there's a typo on the motion, that's all I'm saying. It appears.
It is a typo. On the, on the first page, it's, it states that it's a 1.16 parcel into two parcels, 0.65 acre and 0.51 acre in size.
Which is, which is correct. I mean, do we hear about that typo?
Yes, we do when we make an emotion.
So Rachel needs to amend her motion, or she could cancel it and start over.
So I'm amending it to say a map of map of a 1.16 acre parcel into two parcels?
Yes.
And I'll second that amendment.
Worked for me.
Alright.
Thanks for catching that Larry.
Perfect.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
Okay, there you go. Congratulations, all ready to rock and roll. Thanks Keith. Alright, let's move on. Good job. Design review applicant in construction of six multifamily apartment build.
It looks like we're gonna pause, we're gonna take about a 10 minute pause. We've got some technical issues going, so.
Okay, everybody at home, 10 minutes. So we're gonna get back in exactly
6:38?
6:38, so please come back at 6:38 and make sure Liz can be able to be on track, okay? Hope stand by.
We had a great time this weekend. We had the kids over, the grandkids. Not gonna use that, that's a very old laptop, so obviously it's not in sync with the new technology. As far, I don't know, as far as whatever, operating system or whatever, but anyway, I apologize about that and I won't have the, the presentation on the screen now. So we'll just have to use the, you know, what's in your packet and of course, you all received the larger plans that were delivered last week. So we just won't have the benefit of displaying them on the screen, so I apologize about that. So, but we're ready to go if everyone is, is ready there.
So people are still at home able to contact? If needed?
Yes. Yes, they'll still be able to call in and, you know, the agenda has been posted and, and noticed appropriately, so if they have had, I mean, no one's come in and asked questions, so I'm not sure if, you know, does it seem like there's been any controversy or anything special about this project?
Perfect. Alright, well, let's move on.
And it is, sorry, it's also on the website, the packet itself.
Alright. Okay, design review application consideration for six multifamily apartments, buildings. Applicant Will Adams, the project is on Smith Lane. And it is a multi-residential family in RM area. So Liz, can we hear all about that, please?
Yeah, so yes, as Chairman described, this is a design review for a 36 unit multifamily development in six buildings. And the site plan, the review sheets that the Planning Commission and that, which are in the staff report and available online on the, on the city website, the sheets that you've looked at include the site plan. Which was the layout and the road and all the areas of this, of the development. Building elevations, building colors, a landscaping plan and lighting fixtures. So all of those have been available and reviewed by the Planning Commission. I just wanna make that clear since we're not gonna have any display on the screen. So yeah, the total of 36 living units, each, each of the buildings are two stories and include, each building includes three two bedroom units and three one bedroom units. In addition, each building will have separate storage units, access from the outside. And that's one for each living unit. There'll be a trash enclosures on each of the six buildings. Nine parking spaces per unit, and it's a total of 54 spaces on the overall development. And you may recall, this was subject to a conditional use permit, I think it was last December. And a subdivision for a parcel on each, for each of the buildings. And I know that parking was discussed then, and the lay, the overall layout was approved with, you know, the zoning standards and, and whatnot. So this, this agenda item, this application is for design review of the exterior, you know, the visuals of the, of the building from the exterior. It is located in a residential multifamily district and is surrounded by multifamily uses located on Smith Lane on the south side. So let's see, so the site plan. I guess I'm gonna go to the packet. So you've got the building elevations. It's got a hip roof, all the buildings all are similar with each other. There's a hip roof, single hung windows. There's a variety of use of texture and colors, hardy plank lap siding. And then I think for a lot of texture and interest, they've included corrugated metal on the patio fencing and also on the exterior stairwell. Belly band also along the hardy plank siding. And asphalt shingles for the roof. for the roof. Um, the lighting fixtures include wall sconces and post mounts. And you've got a plan that shows the layout of the lighting. And then you've got the building colors and I apologize that those aren't available on for display, but um, you did receive, the applicant prepared a very nice uh, display of the colors for you with all of the um, there's three different scenarios or three different, three different color schemes. And they all include similar but not the same, so there's some variety. Um, the body in a range of grays and I think like a light taupe. Um, the trim in a dark gray, kind of almost black. And then the door, door options are green or redwood and those are all on the, the large board that was prepared and and distributed to you. And then, um, the trash enclosure has split face concrete blocks with metal gates. Um, and also they're using metal, horizontal metal for the fencing around the exterior open space area. So each unit has an exterior, either, you know, a garden area on the bottom floor, patio, and then a, a deck on top and they'll have um, the metal fencing. And then there's a landscaping plan that was provided in the packet, which includes a range of trees, including wax myrtle, Doug fir, dogwood and scarlet maple and shrubs of rhododendrons and apricot, queen flax, hydrangea and abelia and a ground cover of turf. Um, and also within the landscaped areas, lily of the Nile, blue fescue and Douglas iris. And then the biofiltration areas have purple needle grass, fescue, California barley and meadow barley. So the staff report also includes a brief discussion of the general plan consistency and a listing of the designer view findings and considerations for you. And then in addition, there is our, there's a resolution and a list of standard conditions of design review, which include just conditions that are required for all for all applications. If you have any questions on those, I'm happy to discuss those. So with that, I'll pass it back to the Planning Commission.
All right, thank you, Liz. Anybody got any comments before we start this? Larry, I, I know you have that in the background, the, the colored pattern and everything like that. I can see it behind you. Can, um, because we're not getting all this from Liz, can you at least let everybody at home real quick? Um, would you mind? See if we can get that on camera real fast? Oh, and up.
Camera, I can see.
Yeah, that's a little better, um, a little further away from the camera. That's, it's great. Thanks, Kevin. Larry, that's awesome. So the big one, if everybody at home can tell, that's the real.
Hey, here, I'm, I'm struggling with this a little bit.
Yeah, it's, it's fine. We can, we can see it. Great, Larry. Thank you. Thanks, Kevin. All right. Just for everybody to see it, just some kind of visual. Well, anybody have any comments on this thing at all?
I mean, I will just add that I think they really did a nice design. The architect is JMB Architecture in, from Willow Creek and the applicant put a, a really nice packet together. I think that was really complete.
I, I gotta admit, I don't remember this one coming up for on our regular stuff when it did come up. The only thing I'm concerned about is the garbage, which is normal, but it's all good. We'll figure that out as we go. But the rest of it, for me, it looks like it's fine. It looks, it looks like a great project. Can, um, looks comparable to what's already there next, next to it. So.
Liz, I do have a question.
Chairman Mobley, if, they have to be able to get a fire truck in there. If they can get a fire truck in there, they should be able to get a garbage truck in there, right?
It's getting it back out is my, my issue, but it's, I think it'll be fine.
Yeah, there.
Question.
If I could just respond, um, you can see the layout on the last, it's on the landscaping or the lighting plan. And there is a T shape, so there's the road that goes straight in and then a horizontal T at the end. So I think that's, um, and I don't remember off the top of my head the width of that road, probably 24 feet.
It's 27 feet. So it should be wide enough, I believe. Um, I, I, I like just, I, like you said, I don't remember it coming up for in the general and I probably made a comment at the time, but I just don't remember it and I'm sorry about that, so. But I'm sure it'll be fine. I'm sure we'll be able to get in and out with little or no problem. We'll deal with that as it comes up. Kevin, you had a comment?
I had a question. Um, Liz, I was listening and maybe I misunderstood, but there's six buildings. Are they all gonna be different colors? Or are they gonna be consistently the same? I was a little confused with what I heard.
Yeah, there, there's the three color schemes. They're similar, but there's enough variety. So on the color boards, um, each, I think each of the columns shows a different scheme and probably I'm guessing that there will be, you know, two buildings for each scheme. Okay, so I think it's just a way of breaking up some monotony.
Well, that's fine. I just want to make sure I understood you. I think that's great.
Yes, they're gonna, they're, they're gonna use all. They're gonna use all three schemes.
Good. I just was gonna say, I think the applicant did a great job. The color board is fantastic. I did those and I did my office design work and it tells a great story. And I think that helps us in making our decisions too.
Okay, anybody have any more comments? No?
It's a solid, Chris. It's a solid project and I'm good with it.
Yeah, me too.
So let's open up the public comment at this moment. Please, anybody at home? Again, I'd like to talk about this. We'll give you a minute or two or three or four to call in. And again, the phone number will be pulled up at 725-1484 or at If you have any questions, comments, anything like that. And as we wait, I'm gonna kick off for just a second and we'll get right back to you. Okay, anybody hearing anything, seeing anything? Kathy, we getting anything?
We have no comments. No comments so far.
We are all back?
Chris, I'll note that the applicant is here as well on the phone, on the Zoom, so they can speak directly. Many comments.
Okay, so anybody have any comments for the applicant while we're at this point? Don't see none. Okay, looking for a motion to close public comment.
Chris, you might ask if the applicant wants to add anything.
Okay.
In addition, you know, questions, but also they may want to expand on what I presented.
Okay, uh, Mr. Adams, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can. Anything you'd like to add to what Liz said or anything going on that you'd like to put forward?
Uh, I just, I'd just like to say we're really encouraged with our work with the staff and excited about this project. I think it's gonna be really high quality and just excited to move forward. With me also are Gabrielle and Anna from my office who did a good job with the application process and just looking to move to the next step and excited to be working in Fortuna again.
Cool. Thank you. I really love the, um, handout with all the different color schemes. That was, that was great.
I, I have a question on those color schemes. Do you want those back?
Uh, you can keep them.
Okay, so at this moment, we're looking to look into closed public comment unless we hear anything or seeing anything.
I'll move that we close public comment.
I'll second that motion.
I see Kathy coming in with a piece of paper.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, public comments closed. All right, back to you guys. Any questions, comments, concerns, loving it, hating it, wanted to make any changes to it?
Let's put it to bed.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt. If anybody else is.
Do it.
Okay, motion to adopt Resolution P 20203035, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving design review of a six-building, 36-unit multifamily development including elevations, colors, lighting and landscaping.
Second that motion.
Kathy?
Roll call vote again. Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
There you go. Congratulations, Mr. Adams. You are approved and ready to rock and roll.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks for all the hard work. Okay, let's move on. So here comes the fun part with the long, drawn out. Uh, consideration of the year 2020, 2020 and 2021 capital improvement program. Liz. Here, Liz, you are muted.
There we go.
There you are.
Don't you just love a Zoom meeting? Um, so yes, this is consideration of the fiscal year 2020 through 2021, um, five-year capital improvement program and consistency with the general plan. So the background on this is that as part of the budget process, the city Public Works Department prepares a five-year capital improvement program and it prioritizes and sets funding for public infrastructure improvements. And it's the Planning Commission's responsibility under government code um, to make the finding that a capital improvement program is consistent with the general plan before the CIP can be adopted by the city council. Um, so in that regard, the CIP, or this is a planning tool. The CIP is a planning tool that implements a general plan, you know, of course, it's also for the public health and well-being and just for the general, um, well-functioning of the city. But you can see how it's also a planning tool as the government code ties it to the general plan. So, um, you have, in your packet, you have the full CIP that was prepared by the Public Works Department. And Kevin Carter's here to, I think he's gonna present that to you. Um, I'm not sure if he's got that um, loaded on his computer, but, um, you did have that in your packet. And also, um, planning staff, I wrote up the, I reviewed the general plan. I reviewed the projects in the CIP. And I just looked, you know, um, to make sure that it, to, um, that they're consistent. Um, and, you know, for the most part, this year, there aren't any big, you know, fancy projects. There's a lot of maintenance and replacement of, you know, water lines and sewer lines and maintaining roads, maintaining the city's treatment plant and the the wells and the tanks and all of that. So, um, you know, an example of um, the example I like to use where there wouldn't be consistency if there was a big expansion plan for the treatment plant that went beyond the population projections for the city. In that regard, that would be an inconsistency with the general plan. Um, so if Kevin wants to describe briefly the CIP, I did, so I did write up the findings in Attachment A and we can go over those if you want to, or you may have had a chance to read those. But I broke it down by, um, the chapters of the general plan. So, um, for example, I gave you descriptions of the land use element, economic development, um, housing element, transportation and circulation, and that one, of course, um, has a little bit more analysis. The first couple that I referenced don't, like the, the land use element really doesn't have any tie to the CIP as far as the CIP projects go. So there's, that has less discussion. Natural and cultural resources would be the projects that improve and maintain the city's storm drain system and the, and the creek improvements like the Rona Creek project and the Hillside Creek project that were just completed. Um, parks, recreation and space element of the general plan. There, this year, there aren't any park projects. There usually are quite a few, but sadly, because of budgetary constraints, um, there aren't any this year. The public facilities element, um, so for example, I've listed the general plan policies that relate to public works and there are quite a few there and describes the projects in the CIP and how they're consistent, health and safety. Um, really the only one relating to the CIP would be, um, that, um, the CIP tasks really need to protection of the treatment plant from flooding house, which is a CIP project this year. And then community design, there aren't any CIP projects relating to uh, community design. So if you have any questions about that, but let's turn it over to Kevin, the Deputy Director of Public Works.
All right, good evening, everybody. This draft CIP was taken to council at a special workshop on May 11th. And we're here tonight to kind of give a brief presentation on the plan and like Liz said, for its consideration as being consistent with the general plan. And, um, wrong one. And then it'll be going back to council on June 15th for final adoption. And, um, so really, and I did it again, can't get it. Okay. Sorry. Trying to get my can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Excellent. So it's a rather lengthy document, you know, what is it, 68 pages? Um, a lot of it, as most of you are aware, breaks Um, a lot of it, as most of you are aware, breaks, breaks each project down and gives a description, justification, um, funding sources, past, uh, um, revenue that's been spent, uh, to get us to the point where we are in the project. And, you know, we'll just kind of go down relatively quickly and give a, a, a quick overview of kind of where we're sitting, um, in our five-year program. And I, I just want to point out the Parks and Recreation one. It is a little disappointing that we have zero dollars projected in there. We did apply for nearly seven million dollar grant through, um, Prop sixty eight. And it got, it didn't, it wasn't successful. So we're hoping to kind of continue to move forward with, um, with the master plan that was created for that. It's, it's a really good plan. As, um, some of you are aware, there's the McLean property that is, um, next to Newburgh Park. And we're looking at expanding Newburgh Park out with a lot of really neat features. Um, there is another portion of that program that we will be seeing. Some money, uh, come our way, and we're hoping we'll be using that to acquire the property. So there really isn't any capital improvement necessarily. You can see that there are some pretty big numbers. Um, a lot of it's in water, wastewater. We have drainage. Um, the big drainage project this coming year, like Liz mentioned, we were able to get rid of, finish out Rona Creek and Hillside Creek. We're in the FEMA remapping stage of that. We're hoping within the next year that we can then complete and get everybody out of the floodplain uh, as the project was intended. The big one this year is Jamison Creek, and I will just, um, inform now that we're having to do a full road closure of Ronerville Road, um, to replace the culvert that had failed a few years back. And we were able to get grant dollars to replace that. Mercer Fraser will be starting the work, um, I believe, June eighth. And Brendan Byrd is the, uh, project manager on that. He is our deputy direct, uh, deputy city engineer. There's a few other important projects that, that will be starting up, if they haven't started up already. Uh, Safe Process School, they started today, I believe, in the parking lot of South School. And there's, uh, Redwood Way getting some, um, paving done later this year. Um, quite a bit of, one of the bigger headaches of mine anyway, give a little side note is we participate with the countywide Accelerator Slurry Seal Project, and this year was Fortuna's turn to manage it for all the other entities. And it was, um, a challenge, just put it that way, and it will continue to be so, but we're hoping to just be able to do some work in the future. We do have some regular maintenance of our water systems. We have some, um, a lot of our reservoirs need a little bit of love and care. We are going to be recoating our steel tanks. One is on Camden. The other one is, uh, up on Hillside. And we will be doing some rework on the Vansel. We're going to be doing, um, that's pretty much it for, for our reservoirs. Some of you are familiar with our largest project going on, the, uh, MPDS compliance project are basically, it's our summertime discharge. And we've been moving forward with acquiring some property across the river. We have gotten in through the SEQA stage, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Liz, it's, um, that's been moving forward with a mitigated NIGDEC. And, um, so that's kind of our big project that's kind of, that's out there. We're gonna be putting in for another, our request or proposals to, uh, finish the design on that, finish the permitting. That is all anticipated to be in the next year or two. We have some compost expansion areas. We do have some, some areas that we can expand our compost facilities a little bit, give our crew a little bit more room to move piles around. Um, it seems to be a very successful program that is, uh, very well appreciated, I believe, by the citizens. Um, we will be doing a digester maintenance project here that is gonna be the first time that it'll have been maintained since it was built in oh six. And so that's a good thirteen, fourteen years of it, and we need to drain it down, clean it, inspect it, recoat the inside, and get it back online. That's been actually a very, very big project that, um, it's not something we normally do. I mentioned the Jamison Creek project. Um, we do our storm drain maintenance project. It's a little bit. We don't have as much money as we normally have through Measure E to maintain some of our facilities. I'm a little nervous about that, but, um, we will make everything stretched the best we can. But it's just generally trying to keep out in front of, of, um, any catastrophic failures. This one is an interesting project, the Storm Drain Infrastructure Vulnerability Assessment Project. It was through a grant through FEMA. And we're able to kind of take a look at our system, uh, citywide. And, you know, that's really the first place. I mean, we just go off of, you know, experience and knowledge of the system, and then, you know, when we have to see sinkholes, you know, forming or something like that. So this will be a really good tool for us to use to go after some of our, um, bigger projects. Oh, just one, one more quick one. I, I kind of skipped over the water line project that's gonna be going on, that's connecting Pressure Zones four, six. And, um, that is actually gonna be a good redundancy water source for primarily the hospital and, uh, open door now that it's built. But it, um, actually will be coming in pretty handy um, with some of the projects we have coming up. Let's see. I don't really have. Talks about Redwood Way. We set aside money to be able to do some unplanned repairs of our concrete and our asphalt. So citywide paving, we just set money aside to be able to handle any, um, anything that comes up throughout the year so that we have the money there. With that, there's, uh, some money in for the new police facility as well. And so I'm sure most of you know that, if the police have basically moved into the old EPT. And, um, they have a pretty good design that they've come up with, and they're working with, um, the city manager on, on finalizing that design and trying to figure out a way to build as much as they can without getting too carried away and trying to stay as frugal as possible. Been a lot of different iterations of that. Uh, enough parks and rec, land and buildings. We are looking at doing some sort of solar project. You know, if we can go out and do a request for proposals and get some firms to, um, propose on going after grants for us. And then doing the design, and then they end up getting paid through that grant process. And the city ends up, you know, either putting out some that has a very quick buyback or nothing at all. Actually, we were contacted by Tesla not too long ago. They have a grant program that we put together a list of some of our facilities, and they're gonna be looking at ways to, um, help us out with doing some battery backup and a little less than solar, just some really battery banks that can keep some of the buildings functioning while we go through any PSPS events, even though we have the islanding. But it'll be, um, maybe during some of the high peak, we can run off the batteries, try to save some money that way. And then also be a backup. So with that, it was a little bit of a shorter presentation than what we've done in the past. This is a little bit awkward. But, um, I'm more than happy to take any questions that anybody has on anything in particular in the plan.
Honestly, I think the packet that we got was great. It had a really good detailed information on each of the projects, and I think you've done a really good job of giving us an overview that's Zoom appropriate.
Well, appreciate it. Thank you.
So Liz, we're not taking any action on any of this, right?
Yes, um, yeah, you just need to make a finding that the CIP is in conformance with the general plan, and you can do that by voice vote.
So, uh, so in conformance with the general.
Yeah. So if you have any questions about any particular projects, you know, we could look at the policies for that category in the staff report and an explanation or be able to make the.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna make a decision on a yes or a no, whether we should do this or not.
Right. You're not approving the CIP. The council does that.
Okay. Okay, like I'm, ju- just for my understanding, we've already started on the South School, South Fortuna Elementary School project. They're already out there doing it. So us okaying it or not okaying it, or anybody else okaying or not okaying, it's already been done. It's already been started. It's already been given.
Yeah, that, that was in a previous, uh, couple of years ago, CIP. So that was approved a couple of years ago. It's just split between two fiscal years. So we had to split the, the funding out. So there's only gonna be a month's worth of work, basically. And then they're gonna have probably another three months on the backside.
So again.
Once, once July one comes through.
And then the, the police department's already there, so they've already spent their million dollar grant and we're already at this point again, right? So it's already been done.
Yes.
No, they, oh.
Yeah, they spent their million dollars, got rid of their million dollar grant that they had to do the other project, and now they're in this project. Right. So that's already been done.
And the direction from council at our last special meeting just last week was, I believe they gave just twenty five thousand dollars to do some of the design to even, and they're, they're putting a hold on the money.
So I get it, but it's, again, if already started it, we're not here already. I mean, this is nothing that we're gonna change.
That's.
Okay.
Yeah, for those particular projects.
This is for us, this is just give a go ahead and let it go. Am I wrong?
Yeah. I mean, it's in, you know, it's a significant decision. Um, you know, it does a couple of things. It conforms, you're following the government code, and you're making a, you know, an analysis that, you know, the council relies. What's that?
We're making analysis that most of this has already been taken care of, and we're just okaying, we're rubber stamping it.
I, I wouldn't call it rubber stamping. It's a legitimate review.
Their projects are already, are already been done, or already in, in the works, then and I'm just being me.
Well.
Why?
Well, yeah, no, the projects that are listed in this. I mean, they haven't, that's, these projects haven't been done. They're multi-phase projects, so the inferior phase is what you're seeing being constructed now. These projects can't have been done yet because they haven't been funded. This is the funding for the projects.
I think, Liz, correct me if I'm wrong, um, what we're doing here is just agreeing that the CIP, um, meets the state expectations for it, or along that line. It's other. All of the projects are out of our purview.
They are.
There you go.
You could describe it that way. Unless you find them inconsistent, then that would be the information that you pass on to the council. No, you shouldn't do this project right now because it's not consistent. I mean, but these are all really straightforward projects, I think, this year. And they usually are typically, they're going to follow the general plan because the general plan, our general plan especially is all about, um, you know, efficiency, um, strong public works components in the general plan. So that's where, uh, you know, you can see that in that general plan chapter, there's a lot of policy supporting public works and, you know, just in the types, maintenance and improvements that public funds. Kevin, did you have anything to add to that?
Just that, like I said before, it's, it's not that the Planning Commission didn't have an opportunity to review, like the Safe Process School project. That was already approved in previous fiscal years. And so this is basically, it's not that you would even be considering that one at this point because it's already been approved. This is more being shown for budgetary reasons for the, the council.
Okay, so the vehicle charging station that we're talking about, that we already have two of them that barely get used, or I, I see that we're getting grants to fund it all, but we need more of those that we're not using? And I'm just, again, I'm not trying to be anything but asking the question, not being combative or anything like that, and I'm sorry if it sounds like that. It's lack of a better vocabulary at this moment. So I see these charging stations that, I see the two of them that we use across the street that I never see anybody at, and we're gonna get more. Is that something that we need? Is it something that we're just using the funds because we are able to?
Well, that project in particular is not funded at this time. It's a, um, placeholder for.
Identified grant. I'm, I'm sorry, something kicked in.
So the vehicle charging station, you'll, you'll notice there's a question mark there under funding source on the.
Yeah, unidentified grant.
And so, yeah, it'll be a grant, and you can see it's all the way out twenty two, twenty three. Um, but it doesn't, I mean, the only thing we've done is, is gotten an idea of, of the cost of those. Um, we've looked at potentially the River Lodge and a couple other places and, um, I don't know, I, I guess, I do see some cars use those. Liz, you're one of them. Um, but I hear what you're saying, that they're not like constantly, you know.
But we're talking about in the future, and we're looking toward, you know, trying to provide efficient services for what we may need in the future, and looking toward more and more of these cars that use electric charging, and seeing as the city and the county both wanna bring people in to, say, the River Lodge for conferences and for other things, I think it's important to provide those sorts of infrastructure. You know, maybe not every one of us has an electric car now, but maybe in three years or five years, if circumstances change, or if they become more usable for people, maybe that would be.
And that the charging systems aren't running on generators. Um, okay, so I'm, and then just got one more real quick. The, um, the Kenmar project, the, uh, the roundabouts. I see we're looking at a, about half a million dollars on that. And then I turn the page and I see that we're doing just fifty thousand dollars less on projects that are for the AA and, and just because I'm looking at pictures, and if people are home looking at pictures, they're gonna see the same thing. Um, of a curbside that is on both sides of it, it's clear for somebody with.
Can I speak up just really quickly? I totally hear the, the frustration there, but I also know that the county is under an, um, uh, binding agreement with the Justice Department specifically about ADA accommodations, and so I know that it is.
And I'm all, all there with you, Rachel, and I get here at all the time. Cause I, I, trust me when I tell you that part, because we've been under that same constraint.
Although I hear you, you know, and I, you know, the Kenmar interchange seems to me like a really important thing, especially since buses, you drop off there. If I wanted to ride the bus from school, that's a safety issue.
I'm just looking at a half a million dollar, uh, for one, and half a million dollars for the same for something else. It's just, the numbers to me don't look right on that part of it. I know we're gonna look, looking at throughout the city on it and trying to, um, uh, we have to go throughout the city and find all those spots, like you said, that, like it says on here, the, uh, the library and city hall and the bus stops and the curbs, and we gotta go through all that. I get that. It, when you look at the dollars and you look at. And you look at the project, they don't compare. In my opinion, they're talking about putting tons of cement compared to a few sidewalks.
So that, yeah, I can help, maybe I can help. So that five fifty for the roundabouts is not for construction.
No.
Or that's for right of way, um. Planning, uh, sequo. It's, it's a lot of Caltrans hoops and it's a grant funded through Caltrans, which is interesting, but. Yeah, we end up, that, that just gets us to basically a, a fifty percent design, just enough to get us through the. No one would right away acquisition in, in all the environmental stuff.
Okay.
And then the five hundred thousand for the CDBG is, um. That is from program income dollars that were paid back through loans that if we don't do something with them. They'll take them from us, kind of a deal. And so we have like a, those are in a, in a special account. Um, that are earmarked just for ADA barrier removals. And then we, we kind of got pinged by the county there on the library. They ended up doing a, a study and they, you know, kind of put a big old thick. Um, binder in front of us and said, you're deficient here, here, here. And it's all the way from the bus stop that's over on Leventon Inn. To the library. And that's about two hundred thousand just alone right there. And, and then we want to do some work, um. At some other intel and some other, um, barrier removals around town. So that'll, that one's still kind of pending on what the actual. Scope of the project is.
Kevin, thank you. That was perfect. Um, because looking at it, um, like I said, people, um, asking. And coming up to me saying, how do you spend half a million dollars on a roundabout and the same amount on, on the, um, sidewalks? It is, that was great that you told, that you said that. I appreciate that.
Cool, thank you.
Alright, anybody have any questions or concerns about any of this?
I, I have a question. I'm, I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask it, but. Kevin, so I, I'm looking at, it looks like page hundred and eight. And it's the Carson Woods Road east of P Street, Roanoke Creek rip wrap. And I do see that that's. Has become, it's moving closer and it looks like it's twenty one, twenty two, or, uh. Putting rip wrap in. And I'm, I'm wondering if that's the segment of, uh, Carson Roads. It's, uh. Kind of north of Beacom's and it's a steep spot where the hot, where the road hasn't slipped into the creek yet.
Yeah, that is. Yeah, we're that, um, kind of the, the barrier of a small, you know, tree or whatever that's been kind of.
The one lane?
That's, yeah, down to one lane. That is the intent of that. Unfortunately, we haven't found a funding source for it yet. And our drainage fund is, is low. Um. But yeah, that will probably continue to get pushed out until we can find some sort of a, of a, of another, um, grant to try to. You know, repair that.
Or it falls into the creek. It's about, you know, a hundred and fifty feet south of my driveway.
Oh, exactly. I know, I know exactly. Yeah.
Yeah.
And it'll probably end up being more than just rip wrap because when you protect a, an area like that, I can see it being hill thicker wall kind of where it's.
Yeah.
Down to one lane. And then you have to rip wrap with, um, with, you know, quarter ton rock. Up and down that stream so that you don't create a, a problem somewhere else.
Right. Pilings in. Yeah, no, it's a tough, it's a tough spot, no doubt.
Yeah, it is for sure. And it's so in size right there. It's, it's really deep.
But when it falls, you'll open the park up so I can drive out through the park, right?
Exactly.
Okay, good, good to know.
Yeah.
Hey, alright. Anybody else got anything to say? Kevin, you there? You ready to rock and roll on this?
I'm good.
Okay, Liz, what do we need to do? We need to make a vote?
I think Katie's coming over to do the voice vote for us. I see her. Hi, Katie.
Open, open for public comment too, right? I believe.
Oh, I guess we need to open a, okay, so at this moment, let's open it up to public comment. Thanks, Kevin, for that reminder. Um, please, again, call the number on the screen at seven two five fourteen eighty four or at. Um, where'd you go? KS Schmidt at DA dot Fortuna dot CA dot US. Anybody have any questions, comment on all this stuff? I really appreciate you calling in and, uh. Letting us know about it.
I am not public, but I'll say I really appreciate how everybody has a different thing that they notice. And, you know, uh, we can always count on different commissioners to notice different aspects of projects. And I really like how that comes together for well-rounded. Service for the community. So thanks, commissions, commissioners.
I, I, I'm right there with you. I really love it that everybody starts opening up about stuff. Uh, when I first started this. Um, it seemed like nobody wanted to talk. And now we got a lot of people that like to, uh, make a comment and let everybody know what's going on. That. Shows we actually do care about what's happening.
Absolutely.
So how, how you?
We don't have any comments, so.
No, no comments. Nobody's calling in. Nobody's talking to you.
No.
But, okay. So let's move on. So we need to do a, what? A motion?
Motion to close public comments.
Second.
And we'll do a voice vote, just since I'm Larry.
Larry, since you were gone, they, we made a motion to close public comment. It was seconded.
I'm good.
Alright, roll call vote. Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Hi.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes. Has some canine issues. Sure, they were rioting. In the room.
I can see him in the background. Okay, so, um, Kathy, do we need to make a motion on this or what do we need to do on this?
I think we just voted on it, didn't we?
That was on, on the closed public comment.
Well.
So there's no staff report with a, uh, resolution, but you will need to. Make a motion that it is in conformance of the general plan.
Motion that it's in conformance with the general plan.
I'll second Sandy's motion. Okay, roll call vote again. Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Sure, yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
Alright, we got through it.
Now the most important motion of the night.
Okay.
Motion to close.
I'll second your motion.
Nope, we got one more. We have one more thing to discuss. Receive a presentation of the annual progress report prior to its review for the. Housing Community Development. Liz, we're back to you.
Thank you. Um, so this is actually just an informational item, so there's no vote. It's, it's just receive. The presentation. Um, this goes to the council as well. Um, and this is again required by the California Government Code. Um, so this comes out of the housing element that every city is and county is, uh, required to prepare. Um, so HCD, the California Housing, Department of Housing and Community Development. Also requires an annual progress report. And that is, um, to report on the status and progress of implementing the jurisdiction's housing element and. Uh, as reflected in, um, build a new, new residential construction, um, for the previous calendar year. So this annual, um, progress report includes information on the city's progress in, in addressing the regional housing needs allocation. That's the, um, number of units. Um, that the city is required to make available or the land available, um. Broken down by income category, low, very low, low, median, moderate and, um. Um, upper moderate or upper income level, sorry. Um. So the content of the annual progress report is directed by the state housing law and the reporting forms are provided by, um, HCD. Um, so that's what is attached in your, so, so that. Those tables that you see, tables A through G have, um, are reporting different categories of the housing, of the housing production in the city. And those forms are. Um, laid out are created by HCD, so it's a mandatory thing. Um, and we do by, by. Conforming to, um, you know, the requirement to report, we do, um, we're in good standing with the state. And so we are eligible for, um, certain grants. And actually, we're applying for a grant. Um, that's due July first and that is, um. It's the, uh, it's an HCD grant that will allow additional, um. Housing related, that's a, this, in this case, it's a. It's specific plan for the Mill District and it would include some housing components. So if we're making house, you know, housing available for the city for construction. Then, um, we would be able to do a specific plan for the whole Mill District site. So anyway, that. By being in conformance with this reporting, um, you know, we're eligible for certain grants. So I'll just briefly describe the findings of the report. Um, you've got tables A through G. Tables A and A two lists the city's development applications that were submitted and deemed complete. Um, and, but not yet approved by income category within the calendar year two thousand nineteen. And the building permits that were submitted and, um. For which certificates of occupancy were. Um. Were issued. So a total of thirty one building permits were submitted, um, and a multifamily development for thirty six units. And that's the one that we just saw. Um, in the moderate and above moderate income categories. And the city didn't have any applications for very low or low income categories in two thousand nineteen. So that you will see those, uh, numbers reflected in that. In those tables. Um, table B reports the city's progress towards meeting the city's, um. Uh, regional housing, um, allocation. And again, those, um, so the city's allocation is a total of a hundred and sixty one units broken down by inca, income category. And, um, forty. Forty one units were constructed in two thousand nineteen, but none of those, again, were in the. Very low or low income category. They were all moderate and above moderate. Uh, and the, the remaining tables, let's see, table C, sites that were nee, needed to be rezoned to meet the jurisdiction's shortfall. Um, in our housing element, we didn't have a shortfall of available land. The table is, that table's left blank. Table D, that's the city's narrative of the city's program implement, implementation status. So that. Um, that reports all of the programs that were listed in our housing element. Um, and there were twenty four of them. And the table describes each program and the current status. And really the main changes that we, um, reported on. Include, um, four programs that will be funded by the SB two grant that we received, um, earlier this year. And that includes improvement standards update, residential multifamily development review process, um, adopting a code for that to make that more streamlined. Accessory dwelling unit, um, ordinance and employee housing ordinance. So we're able to say, you know, we have funding for that now and we will be creating those programs once we issue the RFP, hopefully in the next month. And the remaining tables, um, were not applicable to the city. That includes the state's commercial development bonus, um. The number of units rehabilitated, preserved or required as an alternative adequate site. Um, and those are programs that are optional, uh, for the most part to cities to participate in. Um, table G is a listing of sites owned by the local, the locality that were included in the housing element sites. Um, sites that were sold, leased or otherwise disposed of. And we, we don't have any, um, land. That would be included in that category. So, um, again, this is really just a numbers report. And I think less, um, subjective than the previous, the CIP general plan conformance finding that you just saw. So I just wanted to let you know that this report. Has been done and it's kind of a follow-up to, you know, the housing element that you guys reviewed and made a rec, recommendation on. Last year. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Otherwise, it's just informational only.
I, I hate to ask, do, do we have a, a degree of compliance on the housing element that will at least keep us out of court?
Absolutely. Yes. If you go to HCD's website, they have, um. They have listings of all of the cities and counties in state that are required to have an al, housing element and the status of each of those cities. And I just, you know, during the course of doing this report, I was able to look at that listing and we are in compliance with all of our required. It does list the housing element and we're definitely in compliance because we. Through twenty twenty seven. So we're good for, you know, seven more years, which is great. Previously, it was a five year and now we've moved to an eight year. Um, so we're in compliance there. We've submitted our last, um, number of. Progress reports on time. So we're in compliance there. Um, our emergency shelter zoning, um. We're in compliance there and there are a couple of other categories. So we're good.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm not, I was straight, straight up. I'm not a huge fan of this whole thing, but I do believe in a. Ru, rule of law and, and we're here in a public position. We need to support the law. If we don't like the law, we can vote to change it. We gotta support it in this position. Just, just my own opinion on that one. I, I speak for myself on this issue.
I understand.
Okay, anybody else have anything, uh, that want to ask? Seeing nobody. Um, Liz, can we get a staff report real quick?
Or. Oh, the next agenda item?
Yeah.
Oh, staff communications.
Oh, please, staff communications. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Don't scare me. Um, just, I already reported on the grant that we're going to be submitting. Um, and then the SB two program that we did receive the grant for, um, we're still working on that RFP. Um, what else are we working on? City Hall is working on a reopening plan and. So we've all been, um, kind of contributing to, you know, what we need to do to, um, keep everybody healthy and safe. And that should be, I think we should be able to finish that up this, this week. And we're waiting for the, um, Plexiglas screen at the community development counter. Um, and we're going to be striping the entryway. And just getting cleaning stations and things like that. And having a schedule or having a method to help the public in person again, instead of just over the phone. So. Um. I think that's about it for now.
Okay.
New things. We're actually pretty busy. The, we didn't issue a lot of building permits last month because it was so slow. Um, you know, just all over with the initial reaction to the, the coronavirus, um. Restrictions, but we seem to be reviewing an awful lot of building plans and doing, we've got a couple of, um, more. Planning, you know, land use types of programs that, that will be on the agenda. So we're actually still really busy.
That's.
And we're working, we're working short staffed because of the, the staff people who, um. Are staying home either full time or part time due to, um, childcare issues. So we're actually, we're understaffed in that regard.
Okay. Alright, anybody else have anything? Not seen anything, hearing anything. Well, I thank you again for everything, Liz. Um, for all the technical issues again. again for everything, Liz. Um, for all the technical issues again. It's a long meeting for having this kind of a meeting. Um, normally, we're kind of in and out. So hopefully, everybody's staying safe at home and taking care of business. So right now, I guess I'm looking for a motion to close.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Do we need to do a roll call or can you do it all in favor?
Yes, here comes Katie. Katie will finish it up. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you, guys.
You guys are getting your steps in today.
Alright, roll call vote, last one. Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
A wrap.